I'd like to call the January 16th meeting of the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors to order. Ms. Steele, will you call the roll?
Mr. Gibson is out. Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Crisco?
Here.
Mr. Bizani?
Present. Would you all join me in the invocation of Pledge of Allegiance by the Reverend Kevin Smith?
Let us pray. Father, we call upon your most holy and everlasting name, God, just to say thank you, Lord. Thank you, dear God, for just allowing us to come tonight and to be in your presence as we discuss the things of this county, God. God, we pray right now, God, just asking you to just continue to bless us and keep us in your love and in your care. God, we pray right now, dear God, for our first responders, dear God, asking you to bless them and keep them safe, dear God, our schools, Lord. Lord, we pray that you just keep them safe and keep everyone in your love and in your care. God, we pray, dear God, that as we discuss your business tonight, dear God, that you will be able to get all the glory and you'll be able to get all the honor and you'll be able to get the praise, God. For, we thank you and we love you. For us, in Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Next item is approval of the minutes from September 5th. All in favor? Next item is the adoption of the agenda. We need to, on the closed meeting portion, we also need to add a personnel issue. All in favor? Approval of the consent agenda? There is none? Matters presented by the board. Dr. Orth?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I tried to be brief. The last few weeks, you've seen some emails from people regarding road flooding, river, road flooding. So, in the last couple of weeks, I've been communicating with them and in addition, trying to understand not just the level of flooding, where it's flooding, and how frequency, how frequent it's flooding. I think all in an attempt to perhaps work with VDOT to have them better understand the issues and how we mitigate those issues. There's no doubt that the flooding is increasing, but at what rate, we don't know, and what's causing it. There may be ways that we can work with VDOT to help those people. I think some of the more serious road flooding is occurring down in Guinea along Marius Road. There are a couple other places that, you know, we've heard from people, but I think it might be really important to better understand why it's happening, where it's happening. VIMS does have a very interesting website. I don't know if you've seen it, but it's called River Flooding, or Road Flooding, and it's got really good detailed maps of the county and all the counties in coastal Virginia that show the flooding that occurs at half meter intervals. The problem I had with that is that I think our road flooding is occurring at intervals less than a half a meter. So, I've got to talk to the woman because I've been using that benchmark that I've been telling you about 3.2 meters above mean high water. And at that point, that's when our roads, like in Guinea and places that I go to with my kayak flood, the problem is, the water comes in, it can't get out. And I think those are the issues that we may want to try to tackle either through grants that, or working with VDOT to help better understand what they can do to help those particular areas. So, I'll send you that link to the VIMS river flooding. And I had someone analyze some of the data from the last 15 years that seems to indicate there is an increase in the number of times tide rises above 3.2 meters. Now, whether it's significant or not, I don't know. I need to get somebody that's really much better in stats than I am. I might get maybe my Hedrick. Just joking. Anyway, stay tuned. I'll try to get some more information, but I'll send you what I have. I did look at a lot of papers published by a guy at OD, was a physical oceanographer. There are some really interesting developments with the Gulf Stream that seem to be slowing that may contribute to the increase in some of our higher-than-normal tides, which is an interesting physical phenomenon that is very difficult to even understand how it happens, but it happens. Anyway, I'll keep you posted and I'll send you those links that I have. And any data that I get, I'll share with you that I get from the people that are helping me.
Anyone else with matters presented by the board? Okay, we'll go to county administrator items?
Just one quick comment. We did put a press release out about this, but the board is aware that our water bills went out late and just want to remind people that we had a glitch with the software company. It affected not only the utilities department, but ended up affecting treasures office and building and several of the county offices. But it's been straightened out and we apologize for the delay in getting those out.
All right. Citizen comment period? Trish, do we have any? Ms. Cronin? We give you 10 minutes tonight. Okay. We'll move to the work session agenda. First item is the presentation on the 25th anniversary of the Gloucester Matthews Care Clinic. Earl Ann Amator.
Good evening, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you tonight. Note if you're aware, but last year Gloucester Matthews Care Clinic celebrated the milestone of 25 years of caring for our community. And the work that we do in the clinic is and always has been made possible because of our community, the people and the organizations who started the clinic, the people who continue to volunteer their time, and the people who support our mission. They are truly our heroes. So, we thought it'd be a good idea last year to identify 25 individuals and entities that have played a critical role in the clinic's development over these first 25 years. Turned out to be a really difficult task to narrow it down to 25, but what a wonderful challenge to have because we have so many people who've played a part in the clinic. But we are very proud to include Gloucester County as part of this inspirational group because of your enduring support. And the county is in the good company of folks like Peggy Bowditch, Doctors Peter Zulo, Bob Davis, Chuck Harris, Riverside Health System, Riverside Walter Reed Hospital, Abington Episcopal Church, and 18 others who have helped the clinic become what it is today. So, it's my pleasure to present to the county this book that we put together. The book features our 25 heroes and a bit about their contribution to the evolution of the clinic. And we've also created a permanent installation in the clinic. We have a recognition wall. We call it our Wall of Heroes, and it's got an interactive video display. So, we invite any of you at any time, if you're in the neighborhood of the clinic, please stop by. It's in the lobby of the clinic. We would love for you to see the display. I just left the clinic tonight. We had a full house. We do a night clinic right now, once a month. Dr. Bob Davis is there. And thanks to your support, we're able to take care of people in the after-work hours when they really need medical appointments. So, thank you guys so much for helping to make this wonderful resource for our community. It's touched thousands of lives and we hope to continue to help. So, Carol, if I can present the book to you?
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
We appreciate, as a board, we appreciate everything y'all do for the county.
Yeah, thank you. And like I said, we appreciate it. What are the numbers showing regarding the people coming to your clinic? Are you seeing increasing numbers in certain categories? Or what, can you give us a good heads up? And for the public?
Sure.
A lot of public don't hear these things.
Yes.
And with you here as an opportunity, it might be good for the public to hear just a little bit more about this.
Sure.
Because he said you've got 10 minutes, right?
No, I said citizen comment.
Oh, all right.
Well, last year in 2023, and we're still tabulating all of our statistics for the year, but we treated 467 individuals. That's an 11% increase over 2022. One of the trends that we are seeing is that we are starting to see some younger folks come into the clinic. Typically, our population has always skewed a little higher in the 45 to 64 age range, and we are seeing an influx of younger people in the mid-20s to early-30s range. We are seeing folks, it's been slow, but we are seeing folks who lost their Medicaid due to the Medicaid unwinding. So, they've become uninsured once again, and they're coming to the clinic. The good news is that because we're a hybrid clinic, we can take care of folks, whether they have Medicaid coverage or whether they roll off, they can get continuity of care at the clinic, so.
And something about your volunteers, I know you have a lot of volunteers in addition to the doctors, but tell us a little bit about the volunteers. Again, this is for the public, you know, just because people don't see the types of things you do, you know, behind the scenes.
Yes. We can use, of course, we need clinical volunteers, but also administrative volunteers to help with things like fundraising or mailings and that kind of stuff. And I was just telling him that we just started yesterday with a new volunteer cardiologist. I don't think we've had a cardiologist as a volunteer before, but we are fortunate in our clinic, and I keep saying that the good Lord keeps sending the right people to the clinic. We have a volunteer cardiologist, a volunteer rheumatologist, endocrinologist, and orthopedic surgeon in addition. So, it's nice, even though we refer care to Walter Reed and Centerra and others who help us, it's also nice to have those specialties in-house where sometimes it might be a little bit of a wait for us to get those appointments outside of the clinic, so. Any other questions?
One question?
Yes.
The book, is the book for sale?
It isn't, but we could get extra copies if they're needed.
Okay.
We'd be happy to do that.
Good. I like that.
All right. Well, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next item is informational tax relief for senior citizens. Ms. Steele, is Ms. Harrison?
I thought she was going to be able to make it, but I have spoken with her, and at the last meeting, it was...
Oh, there she is. Come on up.
Sorry, I didn't know the meeting was this big. Sorry.
So, I was just saying that we have spoken and maybe to, for anybody who didn't see the last meeting, that Mr. Bizani brought up a concern about if there could be additional tax relief for senior citizens. And then, I believe it was Mr. Crisco said, you know, maybe we'd go ahead and speak to the commissioner. So, we're at least making a little update right now and...
May I ask you something? Yes. So, when I spoke last time, I said we need to look, and you look into this whole issue, how we can help the elderly with their taxes, but not before this budget year. I'm putting together, I've got some students working on extra credit for this project that I'm working on, and it won't be ready till about, you know, mid-spring. But I'll present to the board first before I present to the public. So, I don't think we really need, I don't think we really need to get any detail as to what's available now. If you want to, that's fine, but I think the project that I'm working on with my students will probably be more beneficial than what we're here tonight. But if you want to speak, that's fine.
Yeah, well, first of all, thank you, Mr. Chair, and other board members, and Attorney Wilmont and Carol, County Administrator, for allowing me to speak. Yes, I'm all for any ideas, you know, that y'all have. You know, last year I had presented to the board for the income level to go up for the elderly and disabled tax relief program. Of course, you know, nothing had been done with that for like the last 11 years, so I felt like it was time for something to be done there. That was just a start for me with that program to see what else we could move forward with as well in changing those numbers even more so. But for this year, and I'm glad to hear that you're wanting to wait to after the budget year because actually I have the elderly and disabled forms all ready to go in the mail. They're usually mailed out by February the 1st of each year, the affidavits and the applications, so those are ready to go. But yes, any ideas, anything that you might have, I'll be glad to listen to, to see what we can do possibly. I know you were talking about all seniors, so I'm not for sure what you're thinking with that. I know we have the elderly and disabled and, you know, and of course, the disabled veterans as well. And I do have some ideas that I could present to you at another time as well, when you're ready to talk about that and see where we can go, you know, to help the seniors. Of course, you know, if you're talking, I think in your last meeting, you mentioned real estate in a way of benefiting their real estate taxes. So, just remember in those ideas that, you know, it will take staff if we're going to touch every senior, you know, in Gloucester, if they own real estate. So, those types of things. But other than that, I'm very willing to listen to what, you know, y'all have in store, and I'll be glad to try to work with you as much as we can.
Mr. Chair, so thank you. What I mentioned last month was means-tested, not every senior, not every senior.
Okay.
Means-tested elderly people who cannot afford to pay their payments. And so, I've got a group of students that are doing the research throughout the country, seeing what other localities are doing throughout the country to help the elderly means-tested tax relief, real estate tax relief. So, the goal is to have it done before they graduate. So, I should have a report back by then to share with the board first, and then if the board is unmeanable to it, we'll share with the public as well.
All right. Well, anything I can help you with, I'll definitely be available.
Mr. Crisco?
Yeah, I have, I have some concerns with, with the way that our program is currently run simply because a elderly person in Gloucester County can own their home, and they can own an additional piece of property. However, their only income is a social security check monthly. That person does not qualify for that benefit because they own other land, land that they have to either sell or borrow money against, sometimes in order to afford their tax payment. That, to me, is an issue that we need to look at because that's the lowest hanging fruit. Because part of the qualification is you have to provide a bank statement. If you can see that their only income is going to be the direct deposit from the social security index, or social security administration, then that becomes an issue that I think is a very low-hanging fruit that we could attack sooner than later. The other issue that I have is there are a whole lot of things that we may or may not be able to do based on what the state allows, what our local laws allow. So, I would like to, you know, if there's anything Mr. Wilmont may be able to weigh in on, on what we're allowed to do and what we're not allowed to do. But that's my bigger concern is we have several, several elderly folks that their only source of income is that social security check. And those folks, I think, should have a different way to qualify for this than what is currently available. Because if they own anything other than what their primary residence is, then they don't qualify.
Well, we have a lot in the program. They do own additional property, and they do qualify. A lot of those are the ones that have the lots right next door to their home. And some of those lots they have are, of course, minimal values due to the house site values, a more larger value, and that does qualify. And there are smaller lots next door to them. Usually those qualify due to that's part of their financial worth and it's not such a large value. We only had five people that didn't qualify last year due to their financial worth. We have about 250-some people in the program. Those people were, two of those were because of additional land, and the others were because of the monies in the bank. So, we don't have that many that are not qualifying. Now, we raised the limit for income up to $40,000 last year. The financial worth is $100,000, and that's something definitely we could look at. That's where it lays. I did do statistics. I can definitely send that to y'all or other localities, but we're talking about Gloucester with under $40,000 people at $100,000. But then you have, you know, Hampton and Newport News, and now they have the 220,000 financial worth, 210,000, or you could go to 250. But you're talking about 137,000 citizens, 181,000, 181,000 people in Newport News, and their financial worth is 200,000. So, those were, I think, the guidelines in McGinnon are set in these, is by the amount of, with the census, how many people in those localities and what those financial worths and income are. So, I mean, I'm all for whatever y'all want to do with the financial worth. I mean, but that's where that's going to lie. We can raise that up to however high you want it. But in looking at the statistics over all the other surrounding localities, I feel like at the 100,000, we're at a good place. But if y'all want to look at that and see if we need to move that higher, I'll be glad to, you know, work with y'all, you know, with that and see what we can do. But our numbers for the financial worth are not as much as the income. Even though we raised the 40,000 up last year for people to qualify, we had over 12 people that still did not qualify, which is a small amount, but usually those people would not have qualified anyway because it was 35,000. But now at 40, we had 12 people that came in and did not qualify because of income, but we only had five people that didn't qualify because of financial worth. Now, if we raise that up to 200, 250, I'm sure we'll probably have more people that will qualify. So, it depends on what your limits want to be for that, and that would be up to y'all for that.
Dr. Orth?
So, when you say qualify, I know what you mean, but does it mean that they don't pay real estate taxes or their real estate taxes are reduced by...
We have different, yeah, we have different levels where their income falls. You have the 600, the 775, or the full relief. So, from zero, you know, all the way up to the 40,000, we have the different categories, and that's where they fall. And for example, I can tell you, we have for 2023, the statistics were, we have 99 people that qualified that were in the 600 amount. So, if their taxes were $1,000, they would get $600 off their taxes, which would be 300 off of each half. And then we had 45 people that qualified for the 775, which would be 375 off each half. But for the full relief, we had about 100 people that qualified for that, for full tax relief. So...
And what was that total dollar amount for all of those categories?
It's up to $40,000.
And what was the total tax relief?
Let me, let me, I got my ratio here, just so I'm telling you right. From zero to 20,000, so if your income's from zero to 20,000, you get full relief. From 20,000 and $1 to 25,000, you'll get $775 off.
And the total amount, yeah, what's the revenue lost to the county because of this program?
Oh, I don't have that number with me. I'm sorry. I didn't know you were wanting that. I have the, just the statistics on who qualifies and who don't qualify, but I definitely can send that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions?
Dr. Orth?
Yeah, Mr. Bizani. So, you have your students that are doing what you're saying, means-based, right? So, you're looking at people that, is their income and all that correct?
Right. We're looking at, we're looking at different localities within Virginia and outside of Virginia and looking at the different programs associated with that. Now, if you have, you know, half a million dollars in the bank, you don't, certainly don't qualify. But, you know, they're looking at, it's, in most cases, what we've seen so far is, it's a graduated system, like she mentioned, it's a graduated system, and also by age as well. So, starting at 65, then it ups until you're about 75, and then up to 75 with low, you know, this threshold, then you get zero, you get, you get full relief. But there's different programs in different counties, and they've enumerated all the revenue impacts. And so, I want to present that, you know, when they get done, before they, of course, they graduate and they're going to get graded for that, so.
I did check with some other localities with the commissioners there and just threw that out there to them to see what maybe some other localities were doing for the seniors out there. And some of them did make note that they are given personal property relief on the vehicle. Right now, we just have the disabled veterans, and we have our military, of course. But there's personal property relief, that that's an idea if the citizens, the seniors qualify. There might be some way of helping them. It wouldn't be the real estate part. And then also, a locality may note that they do discounts on their utilities and their solid waste on those bills because of those. Now, to me, seniors, I guess, wouldn't use as much as a big family would, you know, but those were just some ideas that were thrown back to me where they're getting discounts because they're seniors. So, that's pretty much all the input I got from them with other exemptions or reliefs.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
But I'd be glad to provide you with that exemption amount or the relief amount for the elderly, and I can send it to Carol, and she can, you know, provide it for you if you like.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. And sorry I was late.
You're right on time. Next item is a public hearing to consider a lease between Gloucester County and Bay Aging. Mr. Baines?
Evening, Chairman, members of the board, and Mr. Wilmont. Ms. Steele, this is actually the public hearing for consideration of the lease. Gloucester County's been leasing the property identified as the Senior Center and the Senior Center Annex to Bay Aging for the operation of the Gloucester Active Lifestyle Center. The renewal period for the previous lease expired on December 31st of last year. The attached lease has been reviewed by both parties, and the county attorney is now ready for consideration by the board. For the lease of the county, a public hearing is required to be considered. Although public hearings are normally done in your first meeting, we're doing this one tonight since the lease ended a couple weeks ago. So, this is a public hearing for renewing the lease of the Senior Center. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Mr. Bizani? Lease terms increase as far as the lease?
We don't, the lease terms, we don't really charge anything. We allow them to use the building for the active...
It's our property.
Yes, sir. It's our property, and we, yeah. It's the other way around. Yes, sir.
Ms. Cronin, has this been properly advertised? Well, we'll have citizen comment period. 20 minutes.
She's not a citizen.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Baines?
We have looked at it, and it's a 60-month lease with a term of renewable for 60 months, so that's 10 more years.
Does a resolution on page...
Do you want to close public hearing?
Yes, we'll close the public hearing. Well, there's a resolution on page 27.
Motion to approve, second.
Ms. Steele, will you poll the board?
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Motion carries. I know. I'm going with the form until she's...
Next item is the discussion of direction on designation of the Aberdeen Wharf for commercial use only. Mr. Baines?
Thank you. Again, Chairman and members of the board. This one, if you haven't been down there yet, I suggested you go down and look at the wharf at the end of Aberdeen Creek Road. This is a project that we got funding from the Port Authority, and the rebuilt pier will be there for quite some time. This is a commercial-grade pier. We redid the, the actual property also because there was a lot of erosion to set it up. And because it is, it's such a used area that we were, during the time of construction, we had to lease from the neighbors to allow the watermen to come in there because there's so many that dock there. Any evening, you can probably see anywhere between five and 10 boats tied up to each other there. Since it is a commercial wharf, and because so many people use it for that designation, we're coming to you tonight to see if you guys would be interested in designating that. So, since the repair work has been completed and the commercial fishermen are already back on it, you can recall from earlier discussions that Code Section 218B specifies that the board may designate certain portions of any wharf for specific uses. Given the heavy use of commercial fishermen, staff believes that for the safety reasons and avoid conflicts between commercial and recreational vessels, that a commercial designation of this wharf would be best. In a, if after the discussion the board would like to make that designation, we can prepare you a resolution. We can return on February 6th. And there is no public hearing for this, but you could choose, obviously, to notify the public. Any questions?
So, if we move forward with that, then we're saying that the public can't use it at all? How does that work?
Yeah, it's designated as a commercial so that at that time, we wouldn't expect anybody with kayaks or motorboats to pull up to it. But the size and shape of that, it takes up our entire footprint from one property line to the other. So, there really isn't any access to be able to bring any type of recreational watercraft in there. So, it would just be designated so that it allows people to understand they're not going to try to get down there with a kayak or try to get some John boat in there because it's just damaged. Yes, ma'am?
We did have a problem in the past at a different site where commercial watermen were using a pier and a citizen because it wasn't a commercial wharf, and they were leaving them there. A young child wanted to do crabbing or fishing off of that dock, and there was a little bit of a conflict. So, I think, and in that case, the child was perfectly within their rights. But in this case, it is, I think it would show support for the commercial watermen that this site is for them, and then if... And then if somebody does come down there and want to use it and they're going to be in the way of loading or unloading, it's a safety thing. So I think it, it kind of shows acknowledgement, but it also tells the public, this isn't where you send your child down to drop a line off of that wharf.
Any other questions? What's the board's direction? Would y'all like me to come back with a resolution for you guys?
I think we should.
Yes.
Yes, all right. Thank y'all.
Okay, next item is update on the Board of Supervisors 2024 meeting schedule. Ms. Steele.
Yes, as everybody's aware, we had one correction we needed to make. And then the board packet talks about two other events that could be added to the calendar. And I'd like to throw out a third one that we neglected to talk about, which was the facility tour. So first of all, there's been a good or great interest in getting back to the high school and seeing how things have been moving along. So we've, Trish has spoken with their staff, and we have three dates that are available for the board. One would be at four-thirty before your February sixth meeting. So you would convene at four-thirty, basically end at five-thirty, allow you enough time to get back here by six o'clock. So that's Tuesday, February sixth. Thursday, two days later, is also available at the same time at four-thirty. Or if you choose, you could wait until the March joint meeting and do this with the school board the same way that you did the last tour. It's really up to the board. And if you know what you, which direction you want to go tonight, we can make that correction onto the agenda or onto the calendar.
Personally, I think we should do it at the joint meeting so we can do it with the school board.
Mm-hmm.
The sixth date, while it's the closest, we have the potential with what the schools have asked us to participate in, that we may be having, we, we, some of us may be at a, an event.
Fifth and sixth.
The fifth and the sixth. They're wanting to do a little, a small reception on the sixth to let the principals discuss what, what the principal for the day went like. So I would prefer the March joint meeting. It's just, I think it's cleaner. I mean, we can be there with the school board.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Some more time to get to know our new members on the school board as well.
All right, that's great. The second item is the Economic Development Authority suggested when we meant to have a joint meeting and between the two boards, like you do with the Planning Commission from time to time and with the school board. And this would allow you to talk not only about the Page property, but other potential economic development issues within the county. So they are saying they will make themselves available on a weeknight. And if the board wants to suggest a date or if you want to go forward with this, we can set a date at a later time, you know, send out a doodle poll or if y'all have a date that you'd like to suggest, we can do it either way because we can adopt these changes and then adopt it again later.
Dr. Or.
Just something to add to Carol's comment about the EDA meeting, you know, I'm the rep there. And so at that meeting, I think what precipitated the discussion was Carol did a great presentation. She was present and talked about the presentation she made to us at our retreat about growth and what was available. And that's kind of what triggered the discussion with the EDA about, well, what does the board like us to do? Where, can we coordinate our goals and objectives? Because they were talking about what their prior goals were. But now that there's a lot of interest in what we want to do with growth, you know, what kind of businesses should we really be looking for? I know, Mr. Bizani, you've mentioned a number of times things that we should be going for. But I think the Page property was what centered around some of the discussion and just growth itself because some people don't want the county to grow fast. And so I think that engendered quite a, quite a lively discussion that, again, ended with, well, let's meet with the Board of Supervisors to see if we can align the goals of both boards into one specific goal and objectives so that they have better direction as to where they'll go with their, their pursuit of, you know.
And, Mr. Chair, I apologize, I forgot that Trish did get dates for those meetings. So they suggested three different dates. April twenty-second, which is a Tuesday night, April twenty-ninth, which is a Tuesday night, and May thirteenth, which is a Monday night. Oh, Monday or Tuesdays. I'm not reading.
Monday's incredible.
Okay.
Monday, Wednesday are probably.
All right, so I said the rate, I, I'm just not doing a good job with this. So Monday, April twenty-second, Monday, April twenty-ninth, or Monday, May thirteenth, or the Tuesdays following those dates. So if the, the good thing is this is, should be after the budget's adopted.
Can we hold off on that decision because?
Absolutely. So how about I send the dates out to be less confusing? And then if the board would like to change that, the third, so we can adopt a revised calendar again. And the third option that I wanted to discuss was holding a facility tour. Basically, a CIP tour, but I thought we might want to call it a facility tour because if, and we can send out the board a list of suggestions. But I thought you might want, if, if you're interested in seeing what's going on at VEMS too, and maybe to go down and even ask if they're willing to provide some additional information about the facilities that they're building, how things are going down there, to better understand about what's happening at Gloucester Point. We have our own facilities, like where the Utilities Department has moved down to. We've got CIP things like an expansion of the parking lot of the Sheriff's Department. So if you would like to hold a facility tour, then we can add that to the calendar at a later date, too. We didn't put any dates as suggestion because I wanted to know, do you even want to have a tour this year or not?
Maybe we should wait until you present your CIP. And then that might give us.
Between that and then our budget two-on-two meeting, or two-on-one meetings with you, maybe we can figure out a date prior to approval of the CIP and approval of the budget. Try to work something in where we can make it work to get that done, I think would be helpful.
Okay, that sounds great. Well, if you would like to adopt the calendar with the corrections of the January.
Organizational meeting.
Organizational meeting of the twenty-fifth year, so. January seventh, as well as we can add in, do you remember the date for the March work session? March nineteenth, so we would have the tour. Yes.
Okay.
Some second.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Crisco.
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia.
Yes.
Mr. Bizani.
Yes.
And Dr. Or.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a presentation of the fiscal year 2529 Capital Improvement Plan Request for Public Hearing. I was generous with minutes earlier. We don't need to be this time.
Should we have Mr. Wilmot start the forty-five minute timer?
I'm thinking twenty-five.
Come on, thirty, come on.
Mr. Schlesinger, Mr. Green, Ms., what was her name, Stephanie?
Tinsley.
None of them are here, so.
So when I practiced, it was twenty-one minutes. So if you, if you don't interrupt me, I can do it in twenty-one minutes. But I am more than happy to take questions during that time as well as afterwards.
We'll see who's the first one to interrupt her. I'm going there.
You, you're facing them there.
Yeah, I'm going to be brief.
Part of the ability to do it quickly is, I feel like you all, e- even though Mr. Nikosia's a new member, I think this is a well-established process with you all. And so I intend to skip certain pages tonight, but I'll go over them during the public hearing. So I apologize that you may have to have them explain them, but that's when the public would be paying more attention and can explain how we do things. So I, I want to just point out that there are two new areas of discussion. One's modified, one's completely new. The unassigned fund balance review is a little bit different than in the past. And then the inflation factor is a new slide. And as always, and I'm going to skip through the process and the objectives and the scoring, other than to say the scoring was done as it was last year, that we scored the new one-year projects. And if they've already been scored in the past, we put those scores on the sheet, preceded them. And if the Planning Commission wanted to change the score or do something, they could. But we let them know what those were, those annual projects. But I started to say, we're using the same terminology that Pago means cash and debt or bond. If I use one or the other, I'm using them interchangeably. And the funding options are explained in the, the budget packet as usual. So the inflation factor, this is something new. As you all are aware, that for the bond referendum, we, we proposed a two-point-six inflation factor with a simple inflation. And the reason that that was targeted at two-point-six was because our finance director looked at our ten-year Consumer Price Index history and two-point-six fit. There were a number of concerns that because the interest has been staying higher, that, that the, between the simple versus compounded and two-point-six maybe just not being high enough. So the finance director went back and looked at a five-year history. So take a shorter timeframe as things are more relevant to what it's been like lately. And that takes us up to a four percent interest. So that is the figure that you're going to see throughout the proposal. And again, we used a compounded four percent interest. So if it goes up four percent and then the next year, it would be four percent on top of that. And that provides an additional safety net. None of us like to bring a capital improvement project item to you that's gone out to bid and we did not have enough money to do the project. So this, again, provides a little bit more safety net in the environment that we're in right now. For the Pago, the cash items, the long list is all together and the inflation is at the bottom. And the reason for doing this is these projects vary so much in the type and size. So you may have, there may be some projects that are, have a higher inflation rate, certain types of construction, while others, what we said, it maybe hasn't changed in years. And by putting it at the bottom, it allows some flexibility there so that if a project goes over, then we could pull from that contingency. It also allows the project to be advertised at the non-inflation rate. And then that might help us with some of our competitiveness on the bids because I know that's been a constant concern of telling people how much money we have to spend. The inflation on the debt projects, though, is added per project. These are bigger projects. You're not doing them as often. So we've singled out and put the inflation there. In the past, when you would see the five-year budget, the only time the inflation was counted in was in the new figures that those department heads put down for what it was for the, that particular first year. And it didn't give a fair idea of how much it was really going to cost to do these projects over that five-year period. And that's, I think, a little bit, it's, it's better to have them there so you understand what the real five-year looks like. This project, unassigned fund balance capacity, this is the same information that you've seen several times recently with a projected excess of two-point-six million dollars. And that is the sixteen percent or upper limit for the reserve. And this is a page you might want to flip back to as a reference. So the fourteen percent limit would be five-point-three, the sixteen is two-point-six. If you were concerned or wanted to know, well, what would it be if we split the difference? It would be that three-point-nine at the mid. And then if you wanted to go a completely different direction, just to know what a percent is. I wanted to provide a summary because there's a number of changes. And if you looked back at the five-year CIP list from last year, you'll see some categorical changes and others. And I, I, I think ideally, you want your CIP list to remain the same except for it's chronologically moving forward as you fund projects and you have that new fifth year. Well, in this case, if you were going back to the last year's list, you're going to see that there is a large increase in the total bottom line. And we're looking at over twenty-nine million dollars for this five years. But there's some not-so-scary reasons for that. First, before talking about those, I want to remind you about the good things that have happened with the FY24 funding. So you have the Beaver Dam Floating Pier, and it hasn't happened yet, but that was funded for this year. The renovation of the Ark Park Basketball Court, which is complete. Replacement of the jail console, which is currently underway. The annual request for the school bus replacement was funded fully, if I remember correctly. And then the Achilles Safety Vestibule, that was a part of last year's CIP, but we really funded it in that current year. And then the school bus air conditioning retrofit was also funded. So a lot happened or is happening this year. With putting the projected inflation in over that five-year period, right there, you bump things up, three and a half million dollars in looking at that full timeframe. There's about almost six million difference in what was being moved from debt funding to Pago. And that's in moving the Woodville restroom building, which is only six-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars projected at today's cost. And so it seemed more appropriate to have that be a Pago project. The school's HVAC was listed in the, in the bonded or the debt-funded as well as the TC Walker Softet and Brickwork. And both of those seem more appropriate to go in the Pago, especially when we're looking at, even though TC Walker is a, a fixed asset worth a whole lot, that facility is, the type of work that's being done is the kind of thing, it's like a repair and it, it's not like a new asset or some big project that you think about as a debt-funded. There were, there are, as you'll see, new requests that weren't on the five-year plan last year. We're always have another year added, but we also have some things that pop up even on year one. We have the additional funds we've discussed several times for Carriage Court as a new project. We have the E911 UPS battery backup, and that's not even for next year, but the year after. And what that means is when the EOC or the E911 Center goes down with the generator coming on to keep them powered, this is that battery backup to keep those computers going. And there's no loss of information during the time that the generator is kicking in. And that, it's time for, to purchase a new one of those. We don't want to ever be in a situation where we don't have that battery backup. The elevator replacement and refurbishment program is a new line. It includes multiple years with different elevators. The roof replacement is the same thing. The school marquee signs is a new request this year for the schools to put new signs out there. The school sidewalk replacement program is a multi-year, and that is looking at ADA sidewalk improvements. And then the Gloucester Point Beach Grant Match. Gloucester Point Beach, you're going to see both on the Pago and in the debt-financed, but debt-financed with grant money. So one of the grants that we have applied for requires a cash match, and that is put in there. A couple of the items that were on there last year in the five-year plan that were not funded but are off the list and no longer on there, some good reasons. The landfill, you'll recall, we've talked about, what if we have to do this seven-hundred-thousand-dollar major construction of building a moat or whatever around the landfill? We don't have to do that. Mr. Baines and staff worked really hard and our private engineers that we hired to fix the problems we've been having, and we've been having great numbers. And we do not anticipate in the next five years, we're going to need to do major construction at the old landfill. And then some of the Wi-Fi and network work, we were able to get that funded through an alternate fund. So there is the big, long list that adds up to that twenty-nine million dollars. It's hard to read on the screen because it, and, you know, it's a lot of different projects. But many of them, you're going to recognize because you have seen them before. The ones that are highlighted have their own funding source. So they get funded if the funding source is there. They don't get funded if the funding source is not. This is abbreviated form that looks at the Pago just for FY25. So we're looking at next year's budget, that there was a request for six-point-three million dollars. You've heard me say several times that we try to fund about a million and a half or two million. I've been trying to push things, I mean, costs of projects are going up. We need to look at two to three million dollars instead of that one, you know, to two. But we've not gotten anywhere near six million ever for a Pago again. The rankings that the Planning Commission, the department heads, and the budget team did for these projects for FY25, both Pago and bond, there was only. did for these projects for FY '25, both PEGO and bond, there was only the one for the sports complex. So it seemed like, just put them all on one form to show you all the rankings. And then I added a couple little extra columns. So you can see, as I'm going to explain, what's on the county administrator recommended list. And you can kind of see how they fall, because this list is in chronological highest scoring projects down to the bottom. And then the ones that have alternate funding. So even one like down at the bottom, the lockset replacement program, didn't score very well, but that has funding if the board appropriates use of the security money that is held in reserve for the school system. So it's an important one for them, and it's got its own reserve account. These are the projects that I have put in for the recommendation. And the problem is the bottom line, and that's the 3.5. So today's presentation is a little different than we've had in the past, because, you know, this is not, this is getting information out for the public hearing. So it is not the final, final. That will come at the March meeting when the whole budget's done. So in between now and then, I will be looking for guidance from the board on what you are interested in doing, because we don't have 3.5 million available to fund projects. There are three funding options that I would like for the board to consider. And lots of others, as the, you know, the comment says, there are things like delaying other projects. Maybe you don't like the projects that I picked out as suggestions. You may want to look at some borrowing, you know, other types of ways to get to where you want to go. When I say preferred fund balance use, we have that, again, 2.6 that we're expecting to have in our fund balance. My comfort level is that we would not spend more than $2 million of that. Because if we do not have fund balance accumulating again at the end of this year, then the following year, we wouldn't have PEGO money. So each year, as we have some fund balance, it goes to the next year's capital projects. And the concern is if we spend 2.6, if you wanted to spend all of it, that we could be a year out with nothing left. If it's, and I think everybody's aware that we've done really well with our sales tax and with our meals tax. But we also have pushed the anticipated revenue so that our budget this year is not going to have the excess we've had in the past, because we raised that revenue up to that level to be more realistic with what we hoped to bring in. So if you were only going to spend $2 million, then it would require eliminating, or pushing back, I should say, the HVAC. And that still isn't enough. So looking at pushing back the generator, the generator is a multi-year line item the next year. The FY '25 generator is for the 2002 courthouse. And if the idea is, if we have an emergency, that's what you have, you have emergency money, and that's why you don't spend all of your fund balance. But if we could try to make it last another year, so pushing that $80,000 back, and then also pushing back the ADA program, because there's just not that many things left on the list to push back. I don't like that. We have a legal obligation, but it's also something that we've been working on for many years of making improvements on ADA projects. So hopefully, if there was any kind of concern that was raised, and, you know, that we would be able to get to it probably around the same time that any kind of lawsuit or anything like that would happen, or it would become aware of. So I hate to push it back, but that's what we're looking at. And if you, so that's only what could be done at $2 million, and that would leave us a balance, just a small amount of $27,000 that I'd just say to put to the inflationary reserve. Another way is to look at stretching the use of fund balance. And instead of using $2 million, use 2.5. That is still going to require pushing back the HVAC a year, which we already did too. Just so you, you may recall, that was part of the bond referendum, so we didn't fund the HVAC. And the first year is body-tot, so we're pushing it back another year. And also, I forgot to highlight, on the proposed by the county administrator, they include two significant cuts. One of them is into the request from the school buses, for less than half of what they asked for, and also a significant cut to the county paving. So once, because of this, if you have a million short and we take back a 13, a 1.3 million project, and all of a sudden we end up with a surplus, my suggestion would be to put that into the school buses, because we've cut more than half of their request with this. Then the next is, what if you wanted to go to a 15% fund balance, carry, you know, the reserve? And that would provide that 3.9, and that would actually leave, be able to fund all the things on the list with a $438,000 excess, which again, I suggest go to funding the school buses that are short-funded right now. I'm sure we're going to come back to these slides again, but I'll just finish up and then we'll, we'll come back for questions. Don't want you to forget about the projects that did not make the list. So the playground at Beaver Dam, again, a line that goes on, but this year's playground is supposed to be, I have a continual line item, but that, this one would be for Beaver Dam. The county paving program, cut by $494,000. The Hutchinson House, not included. Brown Park, not included. The school buses, cut by $632,000 in their request, and not funding the marquee signs. Now, if these items that are in FY '25 don't get funded and we push all of them back, I wanted you to see what the impact on the FY '26 is. Because while we have the $6 million-plus rating request for FY '25, right behind it, we have a $5 million request for FY '26. So it would be moving that $2 million back, and then you have to add the inflation to that. So all of a sudden, our FY '26, we're sitting in the waiting room of $7.3 million, again, when we're funding about a million or $2 million generally. So this is not a comfortable budget. This is not a fun experience to go through this. It's like Christmas shopping with no money, but it's not Christmas shopping. So let me switch over to the long term, which there's not nearly as much over here. Again, changes from what was requested last year to this year because of these categories. So we have $24 million in requests currently, and last year, there was 41. And the reason, again, is because of switching those things. Plus, you funded one of the items, the 3.8 million, for the safety radios. The division restrooms from the school system, at over $9 million, was taken off the list. And again, I mentioned the $6 million. And then the sports complex is for less money, because they're asking for it all in one year, which means it would cost less than having to piecemeal it out and pay more inflation. Gloucester Point Beach is on the list, but it's only, again, at this point, as a grant opportunity. At some point, if we don't get these grants, then we're going to put it legitimately back on the CIP, but we're hoping to get a whole lot of grants for the beach. And then other carryover projects had the compounded 4%. So there's just five items on this list now. The Woodville Park utilities, the Woodville Park office and building, the beach, just mentioned, body-tot renovation, which the schools asked for in FY '26. That, when I was talking about that $7 million for FY '26, that does not include this 4.3, because these are two different funding sources, debt funding versus cash, and then the sports complex. At this time, I have no recommendations for any financed projects, only PEGO. A reminder here of where we stand with our debt. And the reason that the little sticking out on the side is because I wanted to focus in on what's going to happen during the five years of this five-year CIP. So you will see that in the final maturity for the Abington, the first Abington project will happen in '26, and then the following year in '27. That's going to free up almost $1 million between those two years, which is, those are the kind of things that we had looked at when we looked at financing over a long term. The rest of all of the other debts will not be paid off during the five-year CIP. The last category being the utilities, and we're going to be talking a lot more about this at the upcoming retreat. We did not ask the public utilities committee to do a ranking, because they had just seen the whole tenure plan and gone through all of that, and we already had their input there. From what was presented to you, and what is presented now, there's two minor changes, but they are significant. They're in year one and year two. And that is the elimination of the radial well project, which we had thought was a high-priority project, and we had recommended that as a do-it-now. And what we have learned is that is not the way to go. And there's a whole lot more, again, we'll explain while, when we have the meeting. But those funds are needed for other CIP projects for utilities. Everything that's in the utilities is PEGO. So no financing. They're three pages long, but you can see, they start, like, this is year one and two, and you can see the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 items that are listed for '25, and then it kind of goes on down. Some of those go more than one year, but then you have '26, and then it'll go on to the next year's. The DF on the far right is our recommendation for using the development fund. And there's where it says, update to the tenure plan, remove reverse osmosis well number 2A, and substitute compliance projects, things that we need to fix for the state or the federal government. There's the years three and four, and there's years five and six with the totals at the bottom. And the CIP request, again, all PEGO, is for 1.8 million. Our recommendation is that you would spend $560,000 of the development funds, and then the balance would come out of the operating, you know, paying for itself as an enterprise account. And if necessary, the fund balance, but we don't want to go there. We don't have that much in there. There's the timeline as usual, and I'm ready for Q and A. I don't know how I did, I have no idea, but it didn't feel like more than 20 minutes. Promise that the money is not good, but the presentation.
Mr. Bazani.
Just a comment. We all remember what happened during the referendum. And whether the people voted against the referendum because they didn't like the 2-cent tax increase, or whether they voted against the referendum because they didn't like the projects that are on there, we don't know. We don't know. So if, if any of the, except for the firehouse, because we understood that the firehouse could be paid without tax increase. But any of the other projects like Woodville, Bottington, Gloucester Point Beach, and the sports complex, if that's going to cause a tax increase for this budget year, whether we know the people want it or not, we should not include it and take it out, or push it back until we can afford to put those other projects in. The sports complex, I like what they did, cutting it back into pieces. Maybe that's the best way to attack the sports complexes, as opposed to one lump sum repair, right? I'm against, actually, I'm against the artificial turf. That's about $2 million of turf that has to be replaced, because that places direct sun, and it's not covered like a stadium. And artificial turf will tend to deteriorate after about eight years, talking to artificial turf vendors. That's going to be a cost that comes back, that's bite us every eight years. And so if we can plant seeds and mow the grass and draw the lines, I think that's the cheapest way to go with the, you know, with the ball field. But I'm just, I'm just making everyone aware, just be careful what we wish for here, because the referendum, people spoke two to one. They did not want the tax increase, or they did not want the projects, or they did not want both. We don't know. Was it stratified that way? So, thank you.
Ms. Steel, back on page nine of your presentation, I'm not sure, this may appear in the book, the CIP that we got tonight, but for the elevator replacement refurbishment and the roof replacement refurbishment, did you mention which buildings? Is that all of those?
The, it's an annual program, the, there is a link to the roof replacement, because that document, I think, is, it's well over 100 pages.
It's the actual building roof.
And so, yes, and then I think on the, like, the generator, it doesn't, but I know that it is the courthouse next year.
Okay.
So you would, if you read into the actual project, it should.
Then I have one other question that doesn't have to be answered tonight. But for, on page 18, the 2006 and 2007 VPSA bonds, that are the next two that would retire, do we know the total amounts that we borrowed? And that doesn't have to be answered tonight. If we could just get that, if we know the total amounts at some point, that'd be great.
We do, and I limited, I took off columns.
That's fine.
But I'll, we'll get that.
Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Steel, can you give us a heads-up on the grants that you've applied for, what the timeline is, as to when we might hear whether we are in the running or whether we're out?
So the Gloucester Point Beach project, there's two different grant sources, two different projects. One of them is the landscaping of the beach grasses and the whole shoreline. That is, we have three different applications for that project. One of them has made the initial cut list with the state. And that happened the last week of December, but we haven't heard further what they, the comment was that they wanted, they have more questions. And that was through the application that we put in through the Middle Potential Planning District Commission through the Fight the Flood Fund. So it looks good, but until we hear that we have it, you know, don't know. But I expect, in talking to Mr. Lawrence, he thinks it'll be this spring, so hopefully that's early spring, we'll know. At the same time, it's applied for in two different other NOAA projects, two different funding sources, and we won't know about those until after the budget is adopted. But it will be in the spring, probably around May, and the funding would be available October 1. Those two projects don't have a match. So the 160 that's in there, I hope by the time you adopt the budget, we will know whether we need those funds or not. The tricky part's going to be, do we commit to that project? We can put the 160 in the budget and go that, but if we commit to it, and then we get the other funding with no match, so we're going to have to kind of play that. The other big project is a $10 million project to totally redo, not totally redo, to redo a lot of Gloucester Point Beach. It would include a beautiful new fishing pier that's about 10 feet higher, so it won't flood, it's built for resiliency, it's concrete, it will be very nice. It also includes a concrete boardwalk that would be in between the parking lot and the beach grasses. And then instead of walking down these flooding channels where you go right now to the beach, we would walk over the dunes on a boardwalks. And then the restroom and the picnic shelter and all would be raised up on that level. And there's a number of other things, buried power lines, other aspects. So that one, again, we will know probably in May, and we're part of agglomeration for about a $50 million project with all kinds of fingers crossed.
And the beautiful thing is, if, as soon as we get the award, if we, if we are lucky enough to be chosen, Mr. Lawrence will be breaking his phone to text Carol and this board member that we've won this. It would be, we would know, if he opened that up at 8:05 in the morning, by 8:06, Carol would know, or Ms. Steel would know, that that money's coming. So it's something that they've been watching very closely, and they take this very seriously up there at PDC.
And we're looking at other grant sources. We're continually looking at utilities, we're trying to get more into that, and what we can get funded through the federal government, state, et cetera.
Yeah, so with the, you know, the upcoming big event for the, what's it, I don't know what it's called, it's centennial, bicentennial, tricentennial?
Right. It has a weird name.
2036, is that what it is?
Yes, 2036 through 2031.
Yeah, so, you know, a lot of the grants, hopefully, with the position that Gloucester is in, may, I'm assuming you're pushing that button quite a bit.
Yes. There's, there's another $60 million grant specific to the 250th, and we've been talking, the staff, we've been talking about what qualifies. It is for capital improvements to publicly accessible sites to make things ready for '26. So we will definitely be in line on that one.
Along with the other big locations.
Right. But we're across from Yorktown. And this is where the war ended.
That's true. Any more questions from Ms. Steel?
One question, Ms. Steel. You were talking about pushing back the ADA projects.
Yes.
You know, which ones?
It is the, is it body-tot? And I also wanted to highlight, let me go back to the list, because when we met with the schools, the, where it says designated fund, so that- list, because when we met with the schools, the, where it says designated fund, so that one actually, you know, I think I counted that as a pushback in, no, the pushback, I'm sorry, was on the parks.
Woodville.
So it was on Woodville. But the good news is that with current level funding that the schools have left over from the state's construction money, they should be able to fund the sidewalk replacement. That money, just like ARPA, it has all these deadlines, that money, they have to spend by June 30th this year. So they're looking right now, can they get a contractor in here? Can they get that done? But Woodville would be the one. Thank you. And I, and I was going to thank her at the end, but I can tell you, Maria and I have spent a lot of time together lately, and the rest of staff too. They've been great. All the department heads, the information that they provided, the questions that we've asked of, the planning commission and their assistance in doing the ranking. But absolutely, the finance director is completely in this, and just, we're hand in hand presenting this to you.
Any more questions? Thank you, Ms. Steel. Next item on the agenda is supervisor discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, there was a resolution on the last item to request the public hearing.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
On page 40, no.
Starts on page.
Yep, page 40. We have, Ms. Steel?
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Nakosia?
Yes.
Mr. Bazani?
Yes.
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Supervisor discussion. Next item.
One quick, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I've been trying to call Dominion Power. I have a constituent who, an elderly lady, she lives by herself in a 11 square foot, 1,100 square foot home. Her average utility bills are anywhere from 85, and I've got the bills at home, 85 to $95 a month. Starting in October, she received a $300 bill from Virginia Power. November, she received a $450 bill from Virginia Power, and in December, she got another $400 bill from Virginia Power. I've been trying to get Virginia Power to have, you know, talk to them and investigate what's going on, but if you look at her history, if you can maybe throw some weight that way.
Absolutely.
This lady needs some help.
With Melanie Rapp.
Because she can't, she cannot afford these kinds of crazy payments. And it's, either something wrong with the meter. They switched out her meter, and that's when it started. So who knows what's going on with her, with her house? Did you have an idea, Mr. Crisco?
Well, Ms. Steel mentioned Melanie, Melanie Rapp.
Well, I did, we did contact Melanie Rapp, and she was supposed to contact this, you know, her son, her grandson, and, and no one's been contacted. So maybe some extra fire your way.
Absolutely. She's, she's been fantastic. Worked with them, and I'll be on it first thing in the morning.
And I'll give you the particulars on the, the individual.
Be great. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, Mr. Wilmore, would you read us into closed meeting, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors desires to discuss particular subjects in closed meeting during the course of its meeting of January 16, 2024, and whereas the nature of the subjects are a potential new Gloucester fire station and personal matters not related to public, public business, and whereas the Nate, the discussion of same in closed meeting is expressly permitted by Virginia Code Section 2.2, 3711A3, potential acquisition of an interest in real property for a public purpose, subdivision six, investment of a public funds, subdivision eight, consultation with legal counsel, and subdivision four, personal matters not related to public business. Now therefore be resolved that the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors does hereby convene an closed meeting for the purposes herein express for the pursuant to the legal authority here and recite.
Second. Ms. Steel, will you poll the board?
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Nakosia?
Yes.
Mr. Bazani?
Yes.
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Ms. Steel?
Yes.
Now you're back in session.
No, you don't. Okay, there's one more item on the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.